August 17, 2023, Business Meeting of Norbert Borough Council Board. At the Pledge of Allegiance. The council members.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And how do you call it all? Sure. President Bush here. Vice President Danopoulos is absent. Councilmember Burak.
Here.
Councilmember Ford here. Councilmember McGreevy is absent. Councilmember Richards is absent. Councilmember Vincent.
Here.
Mayor Bush.
Yep.
All right. Are there any agenda additions or changes? I'm expecting. I do have some comments. We have just installed the fourth EV charger. Finally, EV charger is part of our pilot program for residential EV chargers. There's some folks here who want to talk about that. Just wanted to explain a little bit from the borough's point of view. This is an essential component of our climate action plan to electrify the borough operations. We've been converting all borough vehicles to electric here at the borough. Install charging stations in the borough parking lot. And also to allow residents the ability to own an electric car, even if they don't have their own driveway. Even if they don't have a private place really to install around charging. So these electric charging stations are intended to allow our neighbors throughout the borough, people who live right here, to have the opportunity to charge their cars and to own an electric vehicle. That's part of the transition to clearing. These are grant-supported chargers. We've got support from PICO for this project. It's one of the first in the nation. And we've been trying to work out our procedures about where they're going to go, how we're going to work with the community. And we are interested to see how this goes. In this case, the most recent charger, we have the support of the property owner of 125 Marion. He was enthusiastic about the process. And we are interested to get information down the lines to how they're being used and how this works out. And I understand there's concerns on both sides. We've received letters, both in support and opposition to this. So I'm sure we'll hear more during public comment period. Just remind everybody that it's three minutes per person during public comments. All right. I may have to have a report.
Just very briefly, things are pretty quiet with the police department. Things are going very nicely in the department right now. We recently had a comb with a cop. And we had coffee with the cop this morning. We're going to have more opportunities for the public to interact with our officers, get to know them in a more casual, friendly atmosphere. And so that you have a comfort level with our officers and we can really get down to community policing. So that if you have a concern, my neighbor, something that doesn't last to the level where you want to call the officers, but if you see them, say, you know, I haven't seen my neighbor in a while. Is there any way you can check on them, make sure they're doing okay? We want to have a good relationship with our officers. And right now, we're building that. Chief Springs done a really lovely job. And I'm looking forward to having more interactions with the community. Also, as a reminder, we're deep into vacation season. If you'd like our officers to do an extra check of your property, we're happy to do that. Just call the office, leave a message. We'll keep an extra eye on you. So that's it.
Thank you. I will now open up public comments. So like I said, we'll start in the room. I will go row by row. And then if you'd like to make a comment, just put yourself down and start with your name and your address. All right, so it's your first row. Make a public comment. Start.
Cullen Shanhard and I, David Shanhard, live at 131 Marion Avenue. We discovered on August 15, the new construction of the charging station within 50 feet of our property without having notified us, without receiving input from the area residents affected by this proposed charging station. This location is in the middle of a residential block with intense on-street parking needs. This is an ill-suited location for a public charging station. While we may appreciate the opportunity to charge our future EV vehicle, the detriments outweigh the benefits. You do not like the risk of having strangers charging their vehicles and loitering. We are not a parking lot like a giant or a wall wall. We do not like losing two very valuable and actively utilized parking spaces. As a possible suggestion, these chargers should be reserved for only neighborhood use. Thus, to remove the stranger concern, I would recommend that you consider having all Norbert charging stations that are located in residential zoning districts be available only with pre-registered credit cards. This provides an available service to the residents while protecting them as well. While these issues are considered, we would like this charging station to be put on hold until the proper notifications and discussions can occur. Thank you.
All right, so that's the next row. My side. Sure, go ahead. Stand up and speak up so the microphone can pick it up too.
Hi, my name is Kevin Tang. Together with my wife Amy and our two-year-old daughter Sophie, we are your neighbors at 127 Marion Avenue. While we have not fully moved in yet, we are very much looking forward to settling into our little quiet life.
If you could speak up a little more and have me show you the fans.
However, it was a great surprise to come home Tuesday evening by the borough had installed an electric vehicle charging station that incinges on our property. We must respectfully ask that you remove the station. While we're entirely supportive of the council's efforts to make Norbert a green and environmentally sustainable town, we're led to believe that there were guidelines put in place, guidelines that were communicated via social media, written in news articles, and also noted in council meetings themselves that the installation of these stations will only be done to the owner of the adjoining property for support. As the owners of one of the adjoining properties, we did not receive any notices and we certainly did not give our consent. We feel like it's critical that we respect all voices in this process, especially those directly impacted by the borough's actions. Our property values might be diminished because we are losing a parking spot and there's a commercial structure now in front of our residential home. We purchased this house in March and the prior owners had no idea. Knowing that this installation was going to occur, we went on long and hard about the purchase. And we feel like in the future, this will also be a case for future buyers. Our concerns go also beyond just the fact that our own property and extent of all residents of the street. We are looking forward to having our daughter play the streets inside with the many children that have received their data. With the electrical equipment, it will now be more dangerous occurring and involve other children. Outside of fire hazards with faulty and damaged equipment, tripping hazards from just misplaced cables or just general electrical hazards to older, experienced children, there is the added issue of biting strangers to our door, which is now effective to become just a gas station in a purely residential setting. This information on the charging stations easily be found on any number of publicly available websites. Charge, plug, share, charge, fire, just a simple few. That these websites will indicate that these stations will offer cheaper electricity than any other station in this area. So that greatly increases the risk and the likelihood that the people frequenting our streets will not be Norbert residents because anyone with an internet access and a need to charge their cars. As a parking and traffic, we have the expectation that parking aren't too cars in front of our home since we have a shared driveway and our neighbors have a fire area in front of their house. This will, in lots of these two spaces, will further exacerbate that situation. This goes beyond just our house, but the street as a whole. The work on 126 Marion will also exacerbate an already tight parking situation for moving these two spots for actual Marion Avenue residents to use or further degrade the situation, especially for any of our neighbors who must rely on street parking as they don't have a driveway. We all thank you, Seaton and Maris, for our points and move that these stations are a commercial area with the express consent of any residents. We would also like to declare that all our neighbors who came to support the time, energy, and just love that they serve for us and also some that have been written letters to be read authoring permission. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President Bush and members of the council. We ask for the respect and assistance of our government. We expect that you hold yourselves accountable. I mean, Smith, 127 Marion. We expect that you hold yourselves accountable for the guidelines that you set and the information that you publicly share. We understand and applaud the council's intentions and support green initiative efforts. We're only questioning the placement of this charging station, especially in a pilot program on this particular street. All of the other chargers are in town or adjacent to the train station in a multi-use family setting. There are a number of knock-on effects that should be seriously considered before introducing a system that will not serve residents, but outsiders will aggravate an already strained parking situation and introduce unnecessary risks to our children.
Joe Tiscano, we're joined by Mark Laav. I'll be brief. I just want to comment actually in support of the residential EV chargers. We recently got an electric vehicle. And knowing that Norbert had good infrastructure, was investing in a new structure for public charging was one of the factors that made us more comfortable being able to use it. We don't have a little two charger at home. So being able to use the public charger, especially in the neighborhood, and I report using them on Marion Avenue also has been really valuable. I think beyond just us, I think it's really valuable for those who do rely on on-street parking that need a place to charge their car or can't charge their car at home for some reason. So I think it's really great to have that available as part of the on-street parking in Norbert. So I'm really grateful that those are available. And I hope to see that program expand in the future and have more charging stations in the neighborhood. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Harvey. And my husband Terry, lifelong resident of Norbert for most of his life. We live on Marion with our two boys. I'm here tonight to show my support of my neighbors, Kevin and Amy, but further to reiterate the importance of our working harder to work with our community. We're grateful for the service of councils like this. We know we can be thankful. And I do want to say that I do express appreciation for it here. How does that come across if I don't have a little too appreciative? But I am a prostrator. To that end, I really do feel like elected officials are held to a high standard and code about this to honor what is important to the community and to listen to them and heed what is best for the good of good. Elected officials are expected to be truthful, work with honesty, have integrity in what they do. And they communicate early and often if there are issues like this, implementations like these EV chargers that are expected to be happening, say, on a park, you name it. Don't sneak up on citizens and take up our valuable time to defend what's right. This EV charger installation continues to blindside residents and undermine us as a community. Council President Bush, in March, as you know, I approached the borough manager who was not willing to provide any information or data surrounding the decision to install an EV charger in front of my house, 207 Marion. It took me finding out more about it through the community Facebook group, CBS Philadelphia picking up the story, and ultimately, our attorney, Colin Bruce, solicited to have it removed. This is time that I'm sure you and I would love to have that. In response to the media, you did apologize to my family via CBS for installing the EV charger without verifying us personally. You had admitted the current council should have communicated with the resident better. Then you personally posted in the Facebook community and pledged to communicate with residents about future installations and taking their location into consideration with commercial areas being the priority. That was March 21st. The EV charger was installed in an even more congested section in our street this week. The resident didn't know. This is unacceptable. Please do the right thing and remove the charger. Instead that you would place it in an appropriate commercial area during court. Please not blindside us. As residents, we just want peaceful and safe streets. Further work needs to be done to assess the appropriate action for Norbert's climate change initiatives instead of creating a ideological approach that if we build it, they will come. How can you possibly know that if you quit it in, people will start buying EV chargers? How do you know that approach will work? Where is the data? Why haven't we seen it? I implore you and consider this decision and exercise common sense theories and wisdom when making decisions like this about your tax dollars. And respectfully, I implore you on behalf of my neighbors, many who can't or choose not to be here for personal reasons, to remove this commercial EV charger from our street and fulfill your obligation and commitment to install these in commercial municipal locations on the way back.
I'm going to respond to that since it was directed to me. When this happened, we looked a little more closely at our guidelines. And this is still a residential charging pilot. We decided that if we had the support of the property owner, that it was still entirely appropriate to place these chargers on residential streets. That was the original intent of the grant and of our program. And indeed, this charger has been installed on 125 Marion, not 127 Marion. So I'd just like to clarify that the charger.
Do you know how close it is to their property?
This is not a back and forth.
It's like five, about five feet away from their property.
It's less than that. And any car that would be on the charger would be in front of our house.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's also unfair to take a borough council.
I'm sorry, it's my time to speak. You've already had your chance to speak. Right? So I'd like to say that in March, we did not foreclose any possibility of putting the chargers on residential streets. It had always been our plan to consider residential locations with the support of the adjoining landowner. And in particular, residential locations that had a driveway where someone could park, unlike your house originally, which did not have a driveway. So those were some of the considerations that went in. We continued to consider Marion Avenue because a lot of residents of Marion Avenue do not have off-street parking. They do not have a potential place to put an electric charger. That is the reason that we continue to look. Because the location of Marion Avenue as a location is still fulfilling a lot of our criteria. So I believe that we have appropriately carried out the criteria that I'm listed in March. I recognize that you do not agree with the very idea of the chargers, with the residential chargers. But that is the decision the council made is to go forward. We continue to follow comments.
Good evening, council members, neighbors, and friends. I am Mrs. Claire McHawley, 80-year-old widow. I have been living in the borough since 1964. After I married in '66, my husband and I moved in 1970 from my own avenue to a local one. To 109 Marion Avenue. That's 53 years. Probably longer than any of you are old. I have worked in Norbert most of my adult life. School secretary, state-run school. You tried to install one in front of my house. Thank God my pole did not, or I would have had a heart attack. I've been, as I said, at 109 Marion Avenue. Unfortunately, July 2000, we got a devastating home fire that completely consumed lovely old 109 and all the contents. My husband and I decided to rebuild. We could take the money and run. Real estate was really good back then. We received the great support of our neighbors, friends, and the borough itself. It was a really great borough. Thank you. I do have a hypothetical question. I'm sure you've considered this and have an answer already. This is a setup for a question. Hello? This is make a 10 of a setup. This is in front of my home. I happen to have an electric car, so it's been deemed as a name. No other car is permitted to park in my spot in front of my own unless charging, which is about two hours for a full charge. Now, this is the question. What is the rule? Am I obliged to move my car to another spot on my street after I fully charged my car for two hours or whatever? Or may I park in front of my own home after charging my car either in the afternoon or evening? Or do I move my car and take up another two parking spaces wherever on Marion Avenue? I respectfully await your answer. Do you have the answer?
This is not really a back and forth.
Well, think about it next time. Oh, by the way, Michelle, of course, is a neighbor. I know she's on vacation, but... That's why, and she will. She has her own electric outlet. I believe in her garage to charge up her car, as do my neighbor next door to me, 125. Thank you.
Ma'am, do you have a comment?
Do you have a comment now?
Okay.
I'm just asking a question.
Want to go online? Anyone online who's ever commented? Is there anyone online at this time who wishes to make public comments? I'm just going to, we don't have this as a formal agenda item, but since this is obviously a topic of concern, I'm just going to run through a couple of the questions and topics that's been brought up. These are not commercial chargers. These chargers are administered through the borough office. And we will be charging at cost. So we will provide that cost. We do have rules for electric vehicle parking a couple of years ago. So after you're done charging your vehicle, you do have to move it, except that you can leave it there overnight. If you're charging, you can leave your vehicle there overnight.
Some neighbors can leave it overnight.
A neighbor can leave it overnight, please. And then, so we have had a number of charging stations throughout the borough, ranging from a couple of years to several months, depending on the station. Have we had any incidents with strangers coming in and causing problems in the borough that you're aware of? Chairman? I know of none. Okay. Sorry, that's terminology there. Okay. So strange you had complaints about people using the charging stations and causing problems in the borough. There were. So as of now, the stations that we've already installed, we have not had any repercussions and any problems involving users of those stations. And we have seen some significant use over the last couple of years. So I'm hopeful that... Actually, no reason why I would need to.
Does the borough get a kickback?
Yeah. I mean, the borough received a grant to pay for these. But we still put in some of our own money. I mean, we received, we received support from PICO for purchasing the leaders. But the borough still had to use some of its own money to buy the leaders. And the money that is coming in from the payments is just paying for the electricity that's being used. The borough is not making a profit off of this. They're being provided as a public service. Not free, but the borough is not making a profit off of it.
Why are we so...
Let's move on to the...
Can I ask the question?
No, I'm sorry.
I still can't cut across the bridge.
Yeah, well, the bridge is coming up. We'll talk about the bridge. We're sticking to it. Trust us. Okay. So I'll officially close public comment. And thank you, everyone, for coming in. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I approve the borough council's approved consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
Okay. At least there are some here. All right. Any discussion about consent agenda? All right, we're voting on passing consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. All those in favor? Okay, two and a half. Or zero, I should say. Let's move on to our presentation items. First item is about the audit. Hi, Jennifer, can you hear us?
Hi. Yes, I'm going to share my screen now. Okay. Are you seeing my presentation?
You are.
Okay, great. Okay. Tonight, I'm here to present an end-of-audits summary to review some information with you related to the audit. The first item is on the non-attest services that we provide in addition to the audit. That would include proposing adjusting journal entries and a full accrual conversion entry as well. And I'll go over what that means in a minute. We also prepare the financial statements and a draft of the DCD report. And we prepare the concise financial statement, which is the summary that gets advertised. Some risks that we've identified and as part of our auditing planning purposes, this is something that needs to be done for all audits. And the risks that we've identified are similar to other boroughs. Those would include a general overall risk of management override. The QuickBooks, and the reason that we've identified that is just because QuickBooks, it's so flexible and things can be changed after the fact. So you could post something and then change it. So we keep that in mind as part of our audit testing and we do special tests related to that. Also segregation of duty. improper revenue recognition risk. And that's again, a standard risk. So what that means is that your revenue is being recognized in the period that it should be recognized and also in the amount that it should be recognized. We also have identified the use of credit cards as one of the risks. Let's scroll down here. So then, audit testing results. The audit provides reasonable assurance, but not absolute. Am I blurry when I'm looking at? Let me just...
You're a little blurred, but your presentation is clear.
Yeah, and your voice is coming through.
Yeah.
We can hear you fine, but that's better.
Great. So an audit provides reasonable assurance, but not absolute. So we do not look at 100% of the information. But we do rely on things like sampling and analytics. We will send out confirmation letters for things like bank statements, or I'm sorry, bank accounts and debt and grants, things like that. So the results for the audit, for everything that we requested, all of the information, everything was provided to us. There was no issues there. It did have one small recommendation, just that the uniform cleaning, did that get included on the W2 if it's an unaccountable plan? So that would be a plan if you don't require proof, like a receipt. For the financial statements, there was an unmodified opinion, which means the information is fairly stated and it's in compliance with accounting standards. One change that you'll see for this year in 2022 is we implemented GASB 87 versus leases. What this means is we needed to take a look at the lease and rental agreements where you receive money, but also ones where you might pay. So we looked at all your rental units. And if it met certain criteria, a receivable had to be valued at present value of the revenue stream and then recorded on the books. So the ones that did need to be captured totaled 1.4 million receivable. And then there's a deferred inflow of resources, which is an offset because you're not going to be receiving all that money right away. It's going to be over time. So in GASB, it wanted there to be an offset of the two. So the result was your fund balance was infected by 85,000. Where the lease is payable, there was just a copier lease and it didn't meet the criteria, so we didn't have to include that one. Then I put together a financial summary to try and summarize what's in the financial statement because there's a full accrual basis of accounting and also a modified accrual. So what that means is the first column of numbers is reference to page 17 of financial statements. This is the modified accrual basis of accounting, which means this is what you operate on day to day and it looks out just 60 days. So January and February, past year-end, we would look to see if anything needs to be captured into 2022. So that's all that that looks at. And it only looks at the general fund, the capital fund, and the highway fund. fund, and the highway fund. If we take those numbers, and then we do this full accrual adjustment, and if we go through that second column of numbers, you'll see that we make some adjustments for receivables. The deferred outflows is where we have to capture some pension and OPEB items. The OPEB is the Other Post-Employment Benefits for the employees. And the deferred outflows is something that the actuary values. So we're just taking it right out of the actuaries' report. Then we'll look at your capital assets, which is net of accumulated depreciation. Then the next section there is your liabilities and fund balance section. There's adjustments for payables, deferred inflows, which are related to taxes, grants, and leases. There is bonds and notes payable that are captured. Net pension liability, and what that is, again, it's the actuary. So we take from the actuaries' report, there's a liability that's calculated on the projected, what the Borough would have to pay for pension benefits. And then it's offset with any assets that are there. So that's the 2 million there, and that is only the police plan. The non-uniform doesn't have to be included in here, because it's with the state system, and the state system has it on their financial statement. Then the next line is the OPEB, which was the Other Post-Employment Benefits. And again, that's an actuary, they determine the liability for that. You have your fund balance for a total, the adjustments were $8 million. Then at the bottom there, there's your change in net position. You see your revenues, expenditures, and other financing sources and uses. That would include things, any debt. And the reason why there's an adjustment is because on modified accrual, you don't record your debt as a liability, but you do on full accrual. So then we pull that out of there. So then you have your total governmental activities. And then to the right of that is your business-type activities, and that relates to pages 14 and 22 of the financial statement. And business-type activities are your sewer and solid waste, and they are on the full accrual basis of accounting. So everything is captured there. So you see that there is capital assets in that column. That gives you a total government-wide for both governmental and business-type activities. Then off to the far right is your police pension, and it's a trust fund because it's managed by the Borough. Are there any questions before I move on to my next slides?
There doesn't appear to be any.
I just, you know, I just had one comment. So you said that there was a change, I think, in the OPEB liabilities. That comes from the auditor, like the yearly adjustments would come from the auditor, or not from the actuary, I should say?
That's correct, yes.
The actuary, all right, thank you.
Some charts where we look at trend analysis, so I'm looking at the years 2019 through 2022. So this first chart looks at just the governmental funds, and again, that was general capital and highway aid. We'll see that 2022 looks very different than the other years, and this was that lease standard, where we had to record that large lease receivable with a deferred offset, which is the black, I'm sorry, the green bar, which gives you then your net fund balance is the black bar. I scroll down then to the next slide. You'll see the revenues and expenditures for the governmental funds. You'll see some fluctuations over the year. 2022 is going to be affected, where expenditures were higher, so you can see that, that's the black bar. The other is the green bar, and that was the debt. So again, this accrual basis, the debt issuance, it's recorded as revenue. And that's why that green bar is so high, because there was new debt. I scroll to the next page. This now is your sewer and solid waste funds on the full accrual. And you'll see some fluctuations in there for the assets kind of went up and then came back down. The black bar is the net position, and the green stayed pretty consistent with the liabilities. The last chart I have here for your sewer and solid waste is your revenues and expenses. Charges for services is the blue, and you'll see some fluctuations there with increased rates. Expenses increased with contracts having increased as well, so then you're offsetting with your revenue to try and get those somewhat equal. And not much change, and then the purple is just your net change. That is all my charts. Were there any questions on these four-year charts?
Doesn't look like it.
Nope, okay. Stop sharing. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Well, I'm curious what the other option is besides credit cards. You said the credit cards are a potential risk area. What's your recommendation instead of using a Borough credit card?
It's very common, most organizations do credit cards. And the only reason that we kind of call that out is because it's a different process than your normal cash dispersal process. So we just like to do a little bit of extra testing around credit cards. Not that we, you know, have found any problems, just that we like to do some extra testing around that.
Correct.
So Jennifer, I think what I'm hearing you say is you really only had one recommendation, which was around the uniform clean benefit. Is that, is that correct? Because in years past, there have been many recommendations that came out of our audits. And so I just would like to recognize that this time around, there's only one, and that's really due to the prior administration and the current administration taking the recommendations and putting them in place. So I just wanted to make sure I was hearing that correct.
Yes, everything looked good this year, it's just that one small item.
All right, thank you.
We're moving into the W2.
All right, thanks. Let's move on to our second presentation, which will be about the bridge project.
Hi. My name is Jim Markham. I've been here a number of times, talked about the bridge here in town, and we're working on it. His first change in the staffing at Benomi, my colleague Jesse Gormley is here online. He's now the project manager of the project. Jen has moved to a job outside of Benomi. Jesse was involved in the bridge design before, he's pretty quickly wrapped his arm around all the other moving pieces of the project, managing the project now. So we have continued our biweekly meetings that we started under Samantha with the new staff here at township, and that all continues to move forward. But you may hear from Jesse at some point rather than at... As far as the project goes, it's continuing to advance. We shared the schedule with you earlier this week, or 10 last week, and he shared it with you earlier this week. A couple of things I just want to point out on that. The most blaring, right, is the bit in red on the Norfolk Southern review, right? So we have shown two months in the schedule for them to complete their review. Their process that they publish is considerably longer than that, so that is a risk. And I know we talked about last time I was here about not clearly identifying scheduled risks. So we'll see. We requested a mailing down of what their expectations are this week. Don't have it just yet, but that's front and center of what we're keeping our eyes on. Norfolk Southern is a tenant on Amtrak's right away, so we do need some approvals from them as well.
When you say considerably longer?
Their published guidelines don't differ for whether they align or what have you, it's 40 weeks.
It's a long time?
It includes 30 and 60% reviews. We already have 100% plans, so, you know, I've been, last time I was here, I was, oh, I'm a little optimistic on the schedule, so I want to be as clear as I can that there's a risk on this item. I do remain optimistic, but let me be clear, there's the risk.
But when you're crossing over, like, a major issue, which is like, why didn't we ask for their approval 40 weeks ago? Like, this whole Norfolk Southern thing just happened, like, we're hearing about it at the first time, like, now, this summer. But like, they have had rights on this track, you know, like, for a long time, and we're just hearing about it now. That's why we pay you a lot of money to find these things out.
Yeah, so, mention, I mean, Councilman Winston, I want to find the answer to that question. I started digging into this project last August.
Okay.
And this process for the railroad coordination started before then, and the person who did that isn't at Benomi. So I am going back through the notes. It's in my interest and our firm's interest and more interest for me to understand what the decision-making was then, but I don't have a good answer for that.
Is there another one? Is there another railroad that has like rights to this?
No, there are.
We've confirmed we're working out all of them. And I can't change the past, but, you know, that's, that's, the issue wasn't these two months, it was what happened at the end of the previous, like, 20 months.
Yeah, so I have two priorities on this item. One, get their clearance as fast as I can. And two, go back through the notes and see what some of the decision-making was that got us to this point.
Do you feel there is anything the Borough can do to assist you in convincing Norfolk Southern to expedite this process? Or anything our local political leaders can do, we need to do our best?
We'll find out, and we still meet with Ken and Alan biweekly, and they've been fully engaged with the other entities involved as necessary. We'll talk a little bit about utilities. Your staff is fully engaged in keeping that process moving. Penn Dot sits in on our meetings, so they're fully engaged in the process. And, yeah, I, if, it would be helpful for Ken and Alan to help with Norfolk Southern, I'm sure, I'm sure they will.
My goal is to do what I do.
Yeah, I mean, we continue to be very motivated in doing this as well as quickly as possible. However, it appears in a lot of ways we've reached over the limit of what the Borough can do, other than to facilitate the meetings and make sure that as things come up, the Borough, you need to take care of. All right.
The next thing likely on our agenda, when it comes to advancing this project, will be talking about financing. The Amtrak agreement that we are working out at this time requires the Borough to front 30% of other project costs that will be run through Amtrak, which at this time we're estimating to be run 1.3 million. We did not plan for that, so we will be in the coming weeks, two months, talking about how we'll finance and make that, that financial part work. So that will be a big step for the Borough.
So I'm trying to understand, we have to front, but we'll get it back.
That's correct.
So I believe, and we talked about this, but I believe that we have about a $1.5 million drawdown opportunity. We have arranged for financing about $1.5 million that I don't think is allocated to Borough funds, so potentially.
I'm not certain that it was allocated towards, that debt was awarded for that prescribed purpose, but I'm very sorry.
It's for infrastructure, so, yeah, you can check it.
I'll double confirm.
Hopefully, that won't be an issue.
But we stopped them both. Is there more?
Yeah.
That's it on the Norfolk Southern?
No, I meant, I'm on the rest.
There is more.
There is more. You know, the last couple of times I've been here, we've been struggling to get the comments back from Amtrak. We have them, we've addressed them. We are still addressing some of the electrical comments they have, but we anticipate our next submission next week to be our final design submission to Amtrak to get their approval.
I like hearing "final." So that's a good word. So what about PICO running the line?
Moving on utilities, right? The, PICO has a couple of options they need to decide how they want to proceed, and Ken and Penn Dot are just fully engaged on how that gets paid for, what the mechanics are about that. But, yeah, PICO, PICO is the key utility, and the rest will follow with their dependence on PICO's stuff. Yeah, that's, that's fully moving forward as well. And did I miss anything on PICO?
Jesse, in terms of PICO, is there anything that you think at this time is worthy of briefing regarding our progress with them?
No, I think Jim's summary is good. We're continuing the coordination, it's happening real time. Weekend updates, we'll pass them to you and Alan, Ken, and just get them out.
Right now, we're negotiating and talking through different options. And I don't think we've got to any point of impasse where we haven't yet found an agreement. If that does arise, I'd definitely alert the council if we have any issues with that. At this point, we're not there yet.
How much longer do you anticipate negotiation with PICO to bid? So you get to a point where you're good?
Well, there's, I think, two different points, one on the north side, one on the south side of the bridge that are still being worked out. And I would probably ask the opinion of Jesse on that, because I'm not exactly sure myself as to how long it'll take.
We're holding November 3rd, actually the same date we had before, as the final approved agreement with PICO. Surely it for the utilities at this point. We talked about having to resubmit the safety review of some of the changes to barriers. That has been back in, has been reviewed, is a little bit ahead of schedule, where we thought as far as Penn Dot goes. Penn Dot's completely engaged at this point. And then really, the only other update I wanted to touch on was the construction funding, which Ken touched on. Penn Dot keeps providing us updates as to what costs have been looking like. You know, construction costs were accelerating dramatically in '22. So recently, that has slowed down and actually has dropped a little bit, but we will be this fall updating the cost estimate. So when you pursue the funding, you'll have the latest number. You never really know when it's a public bid, but you can get pretty close with access to Penn Dot's database of all the items.
So are we going to need to base it on the final bid? Or are, I mean, Amtrak is asking for a deposit. It's going to be based on the final bid, or it's going to be based on their estimate?
That's Amtrak's portion. All the construction items through the bridge, the Penn Dot, or ECMS, the Penn Dot system, right? So that has its own cost, and that we're estimating ahead of time.
Okay.
So we can line the funding up. That was really it. Those were all the elements, staff changes, schedule update, and the funding that I wanted to touch on here.
So perhaps I missed it in the final? So perhaps I missed it, did the file lead date change again? File date, or are you still?
No.
Are you assuming that the Norfolk Southern review goes smoothly?
Yeah. So the file, the file lead, lead date is the same date we had, but Penn Dot just pointed out to us that it is not Thursday, and they always let things on Thursday. So we'll probably move it from a Wednesday to a Thursday or something like that.
If it's less than a day. You understand it's a year from now.
Or. I mean, it's been a year from now for quite a while.
Yeah.
Current bridge just got inspected, uh, just this last week. We have to report, the only finding that we need to do is put up breakout signs. We're ordering those signs, um, and we'll let those place as soon as we receive them. That's the only other update to place the bridge. Signs won't be cheap, they'll be like eight hundred dollars a piece. Safety and community. Hasn't closed the bridge before, so we'll probably get the bridge in.
We can borrow one of, uh, lower Americans after they finish some of their bridge problems.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions from Council? All right, thank you.
All right. You're here, yeah. So you're hurried out.
Okay. All right, and we have the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board, thanks for, for waiting. We only have one meeting a month in, in August, so.
What'd you say?
We only have one meeting a month in August, there's a lot packed.
Oh, fine, yeah. Well, thank you for having us tonight. I'm good evening everybody. Um, I'll try to be respectful of your time tonight. I know, um, want to get through this as quickly as possible. So I'm Tessa, I'm the communications specialist for Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board. Um, tonight we're going to share a little bit about who we are, what we do, and how we're already trying to support your businesses and ways that we can better work together to promote your town. I'm gonna wait for my PowerPoint actually, so I.
Yeah, got you. Sorry, I'm gonna have to. Yeah, yeah, there we go.
Are you just gonna click?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just click it.
Okay. Yep?
Yeah.
Um, moving on to the next one actually. Thank you. So we are a private, nonprofit, member-based company and the official destination marketing organization for Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. We have more than five hundred members representing our eighty hotels, sixteen hundred restaurants and Monaco makers, fifty golf courses, almost a hundred miles of trails, two hundred arts and culture venues, attractions, and some of the best shopping in the country. Tourism is a huge deal in Montgomery County. It creates an enormous economic, economic impact and hundreds of jobs, which is why it's important to us and to draw people here and to try to promote it. Um, we have a couple of different teams in our office. Um, sales, they try to bring in groups, whether that be sports, corporate, or social into the county. Um, we have our, our corporate sales, which work with corporate offices to again bring in meetings, usually at hotels or large meeting spaces. And our sports team that works to bring in any kind of sporting event. Most of the time it's youth tournaments, but really anything overall. Um, our marketing team focuses on assisting the organization and its members with, um, marketing efforts, whether that be digitally, um, print advertisements, uh, social media, PR, um, anything like that, as well as marketing the county in general to get people to come here. Um, we also have a membership team and an in-house creative team, um, that do a lot of our like publications and our online, um, creative work. Um, so why do we use the Valley Forge name? There are actually eighteen different Montgomery counties in the United States. Um, and we do have, a lot of our salespeople do travel nationally. Um, so we want to make sure that we differentiate ourselves from the other Montgomery counties and we're not just one of eighteen. Um, and because we have Valley Forge National Historic Park, that's a very recognizable name for a lot of people. So we decided to brand ourselves as Valley Forge. Um, even though we do call ourselves Valley Forge Tourism, we really work hard to market the entire county. It's not just King of Prussia or the Valley Forge area. And then just briefly, I'm gonna go over our mission and vision statement. So our mission, inspire the world to follow love in Montgomery County, PA. And our vision, a must-experience destination rooted in the past and leading to the future. And I'll also just touch on, um, the hotel tax, which is part of our funding and part of our revenue. Um, we get a percentage back from all the room nights sold in Montgomery County, which, um, incentivizes us to then draw tourism into the hotels. Um, we do our best to promote the hotels and bring in, um, large groups and events that will help fill those room nights, and then we help them, they help us kind of deal. Um, as for our marketing opportunities, you can see all of them up there. Um, public relations, social media, digital marketing, co-op, in-house creative, and our mascot, which is Monty. He comes with us to events and whenever he's available, our bigger, bigger events. Um, especially some of the ways that we help our members and, um, the businesses that are located in Montgomery County as well as the towns. Um, when it comes to membership, this is an important slide as, um, we love to provide benefits for our members and businesses that are a part of our organization. Um, again, like I said, we have over five hundred members, all of which are located, um, within Montgomery County. Member benefits include access to our member directory, um, networking events. We have what we call Monaco meetups, usually about once a month, sometimes every other, um, that are held in different towns throughout, throughout the county. We invite all owners of businesses, people that, you know, work in the area to come out, invite their friends. Um, and it's kind of like a networking event for people to get to know other small businesses or other businesses in the area. Um, we have our HP portal and web, so all members have access to an online database where they can, um, submit events and information about their company and promotions that they're having, offers. Um, we have an event calendar on our website, social media, um, public relations. We, our, our communications team, um, helps our members whatever, um, they need really. If they come to us and they ask with social media push to help them kind of get their business out there. Um, any sort of events that, uh, members are having, we will push out press releases for them. Uh, we also have discounted advertisements and, uh, marketing opportunities. So we have a couple of billboards throughout the county that we, um, let our members use for a discounted rate and, um, digital advertisement as well as print advertisement.
Back?
Yeah.
Thank you. So these are our digital and print publications. We have four that go out every year. Our Creve Guide, our Monaco Golf Guide, and our Visitors' Guide, and the Arts Guide. That's the only one that's not up there because it comes out in September every year, so we don't have our twenty twenty-three, um, copy yet. But we distribute more than two hundred thousand pieces of these throughout the year on an annual basis. Um, and again, we provide a lot of, uh, advertisement opportunities. All of our members are automatically listed in the back in the directory. Um, but we also include other businesses in the actual content of the publications. Um, they're distributed, distributed at, uh, major attractions and high-traffic areas as well as in the hotels and at our visitor's center. And then we also have digital guides available online. And you have some of them in your gift bags with you tonight. Um, next we're gonna talk about Creve. We just wrapped up our twenty twenty-three Creve. That's a month-long promotion that we run through July. It's almost like a month-long restaurant week. Um, we ask restaurants, breweries, distilleries, and wineries throughout the county to, uh, participate. And it's just trying to push business back into, push people back into these businesses and to try some, uh, restaurants that they haven't tried before. Um, this is what, this segment was one, one of the hardest hit during COVID. So this actually started during the pandemic when people were trying to come back from that. Just trying to get people again into new restaurants, support some, um, small businesses. This year, uh, July just ended, so we just wrapped up our Creve month. We had two hundred plus signups, five hundred and forty-one thousand social media impressions, forty-five clips for editorial mentions, with a total of one point five million people reached and a advertising equivalent spend of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, next, right now we're planning for our Arts Week and Monaco Jazz Fest. Um, that's coming up September twentieth to October first. We'll start with our Jazz Fest, um, that started last year. This was another initiative that we put in place during COVID. Um, the art sector has been the slowest to come back since COVID. Um, they're really struggling to get people to appreciate, um, all of the arts and culture venues that we have in our county. So we are trying to push people again back into the arts and culture venues. Um, last year we kicked off our, sorry, our Jazz Fest. So this is our second Jazz Fest. Um, we're really excited, we're featuring women in jazz this year. Um, we're working with an international artist, Joanna Pascal, and she is helping us organize some of these women and the live music that's gonna be going on throughout Montgomery County, um, towards the end of September. We also have, you know, that's a surface light coming, uh, to the King of Prussia area, Oaks actually, um, at the Expo Center, um, also this fall. The tickets are on sale now, um, I think they're having a kickoff party, so that's really exciting. Um, it's the second time they're coming back, it's the third time they're coming back to Montgomery County, which is awesome that they keep wanting to host, um, stuff here and, you know, they keep wanting to, they keep having good results for being here. Um, and then this slide is, uh, just highlighting our website, valleyforge.org. Um, we did a refresh a couple of years ago. We have, um, one point three million annual page views every year. And our consumer, consumer E, E news blast has over eleven thousand subscribers, and we regularly feature members and events, um, in that blast. And then here are some of, uh, some pictures of our arts walls that are throughout Montgomery County. Right now we have arts walls up at the King of Prussia Mall, the Philadelphia Premium Outlets, and the Charles Watson Exchange Station. Um, this was just another way to showcase, uh, local artists and, um, let people enjoy arts and culture throughout the county. Um, so we have commissioned some pretty cool artists to do murals and all sorts of different pieces, um, throughout the county. So if you're ever out shopping and you see one of these, keep an eye out for them. And then let's talk about social media really quick. Um, this year we have fifteen thousand new followers, which is sixty percent of our goal. We have a total following across all of our social media platforms of two hundred and nine thousand with two hundred million, uh, plus video views. We were one of the first DMOs to create a TikTok channel, and we're still actively trying to grow that, making TikToks. And we also recently just started a Threads account, um, which is exciting. That's the Instagram shoot-off, it's kind of like Twitter. So we are actively trying to grow that clip, our following on that platform as well. And then these are just some of our upcoming events. Um, most of them are actually for twenty twenty-four, as we've already had this year's, um, our annual rev, rev run, which is held in the Valley Forge National Park. That's gonna be April twenty-first next year. Um, it's a five-mile run, all of the proceeds go back to the park, donated to the park so that they can make improvements or upkeep, that kind of stuff. Um, May sixth, we have our Travel Rally and Monaco Golf Rally, um, which is a networking opportunity. It's a day full of golf presentations. Um, our Monaco meetups, which I mentioned, mentioned before, they happen, uh, they're like pop-up, little networking events that happen throughout the county. We try to do one every month or so. Um, we just had one in Concha Hocken, uh, this week, or last week. And then our annual luncheon, which is coming up this October. We are planning hard for it right now. Um, it's our biggest event of the year, it's the biggest networking event, it's a lot of fun, and, um, tickets are on sale after that as well. And then last but not least, um, arguably most important, we have our Freedom from Hunger campaign. This is something we do every fall. Uh, we raise money for, um, Monaco families, for people that are experiencing food insecurity. All of the money that is raised is donated to, um, Monaco Anti-Hunger Network. Uh, we, we have a kickoff every year. This year we're doing it at the end of August, where we go to a soup kitchen and our team, um, cooks and serves people that are in need of food for the day. Um, and then that's followed by a couple of months of donations. This was also our first year that we had a spring drive. Um, so we collected some towards our goal this spring, and now we are kicking off our fall drive this fall. Thank you so much for your time today, we really appreciate it. And if you have any questions, please, please do ask.
So it seems like, you know, you've been talking about your, your members as businesses. How do you work with municipality? I mean, we're, we're a small municipality here, we, we don't have the facilities to host a major sporting event or, you know, a lot of outdoor activities. So how, how would you work with a, a small municipality like that?
Right, um, majority, I would say mostly, um, events maybe. We just actually covered the Dickens Festival on CBS, um, last week.
Last year, we have every year, so we've had like months. I'm Rachel Riley, I'm the sixth vice president of the Communications Team of the Tourism Board. Um, thank you, Tess, you did a great job. Um, so just wanna jump in and say, usually with the towns, it's we connect with you all for events that you have, such as like Dickens Festival. So, um, we get contacted by like Fox Twenty-nine, they wanna know what holiday events we got happening. And then I'll go on, you know, and talk with my chair or whoever, and we look at things like, you know, and so I talked about the Dickens Festival happening. We sent Monty to the Dickens Festival, we've had our kiosk there, our staff there. Just, just one example, but usually with towns, it's either connecting with, through you to your businesses so that your businesses know some of the opportunities for free promotions like Creve and arts and other things, or to become members, um, or opportunities like that. Like if you have festivals or events, if you wanna put them on our calendar, um, we help share that out through our blog content, through PR, through social.
So we, we could be telling you about our, our smaller events. Dickens is one of our big ones for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, you could even like, if, I don't, I don't think that the Borough itself is a member, but if you were, you could go into our HQ on the backend and put the event in yourself or whatever events you wanted to, and then those would come popular on our calendar.
Do we get a special rate?
What's that?
Do we get a special membership rate?
A special membership rate? Why, it would be the rate of three hundred dollars, which is what the rate for membership is.
But what does Monty look like? I'm not sure.
He's a fox.
A fox, okay.
And usually has a top hat and a.
Make sure you have like a revolutionary war.
Yeah, revolutionary war jacket.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was a Quaker thing, but that needs to be revolutionary for him, so.
I mean, he has lots of different costumes.
Do, do you know we were members in the past, but then we let it lapse? Is that correct, or were they ever members?
I think you were, because we've definitely been connected with the Dickens Festival. Um, I would have to just double check. I, I think we had up there like Brian Christopher's Restaurant in Norberg, like they're a member. So we definitely have members in Norberg, like in your area. I just don't know if the Borough itself is a member. But we'd be happy to have you. Either way, like whether the Borough is a member or not, like the way we connect with towns is like I said, through your events, festivals, or your businesses. So, you know, happy to have a conversation about membership. We can connect you to someone, we can, you know, discuss all the benefits that you would get. But this is all about open communication and making sure that we know what's happening in your town so that we can help promote it, or so that you know what we're already doing to try to do that.
Do you have business associations as members? Uh, like the Art of Business Association? Would, would they, would something like that make sense? Cause they kind of cover, you know, most of our, I'm, I'm a small business owner in the downtown. Uh, would that make sense? That have like, yeah?
Yeah, sometimes we have different business alliances or associations or chambers as members. I mean, there's a lot of chambers in Montgomery County, there's a lot of teams.
Because we do have, I mean, Dickens is one of our biggest events, our biggest events at July four.
Yeah.
Um, and we have a massive display here. But we also have Music Fest and Oktoberfest and different things that, you know, try and showcase some of our local, uh, local businesses.
Yeah, and we do already know a lot about some of that, like if I'm not mistaken, the Norberg, um, Fourth of July content, like we do a search because we are member-based, but we wanna be a credible organization. So we are trying to promote everything that's happening in the county that residents and or visitors would be interested in. So I think, you know, we know Norberg has a big Fourth of July presence, um, some of the other things you mentioned. So we do a search, you know, whether you're members or not, trying to include that content on our website and things that we pitch out, um, or on social media.
And in what way, because we, our businesses are mom and pops, they have, they're like, I have a little pet store, somebody has a little gift store. Um, big things in King of Prussia are great, fun, they don't really help us, like our, our small businesses here. In what ways do you help like small mom and pop businesses in these little boroughs?
Yeah, I mean, small businesses make up our county, they're the heart of the tourism industry. So, and through COVID, we had a big campaign called Make It Main Street, which was all about those small entrepreneurs, you know, really encouraging folks to shop locally, which is our motto way of saying it, by making it main street. And we're all about small businesses. I mean, you're right, there are some staples that we can't ignore, the King of Prussia Mall, some Iguana Slips Park. So we do have to highlight those, especially in larger, you know, expensive marketing campaigns when we're going like out of region, because we have to catch people's attention to get them in here so that we can then, you know, introduce them to places like Norberg and like the businesses that are in there. But, you know, businesses like that can have listings on our site, listings in our guides, um, they can put events on our calendar, and then we take that content and we can use it in our blogs, through our PR outreach, through our social media, et cetera. So there's definitely a place for them, especially if you fall within tourism hospitality. You know, sometimes chambers, business associations, like dentists are needed, but they're not really tourism hospitality.
That's a good idea.
Exactly.
Can I make a suggestion here? Because the person who knows the history of our involvement is Ed Ridgeway.
Yes.
And you should just reach out to Ed.
I reach out to Ed on a regular basis.
Okay.
You should know, yes.
He said he'll talk to, talk to you next week. He's like, he's like right up there, you see?
Yeah. Check your inbox, Ed.
That's what I'm referring to with Ed, Ed runs our, our business.
Yeah, and we, so we do these town talks. Yeah, and we, so we do these town talks. We have 62 towns in the county. So we try to go around. We can't do them all in one year. So over multiple years, we try to get around to them, do updates, you know, make sure we're connecting, there's new faces, new people. And so a few years ago, Ed actually had connected me with that group. I think we met on Wednesday. It was like an artist studio. And I did a sort of presentation where we talked about, about all that stuff going on. So, yeah.
Do you ever do theme nights, like pets of Montgomery County or actually your backyard?
So Monaco's very dog friendly.
It is?
No, but the national dog show is actually filmed in Montgomery County at the Expo Center. So if you watch that on Thanksgiving Day.
Theme nights throughout the county, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and so half of our hotels are actually pet friendly, and that's something that we promote through a campaign we call Embark Monaco. And we have lots of little, you know, dog bowls and tchotchkes with branding on it. We've done, you know, theme nights at the Phillies and things like that, where there's dog nights. We love coming out to Dog Day events to promote, you know, the tie-in with, you know, embarking on Monaco with Dog Days and whatever. We just did a Dog Day thing. I think it was Ambler or Armore or whatever.
Well, I'm just, you know, it's not necessarily about my business, but if you theme night, you can include businesses, little businesses in towns and all that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. Good to be here. I look forward to letting you know about more exciting our events besides the big hotel. Done one.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks so much for having us. We'll be giving you.
All right. Do we need a committee of recess here?
That would be awesome.
Yeah, okay. We can take a two-minute recess, and then we'll come back to our consideration items. Okay, we're going to read the meeting. We'll start with consideration item 10A, which is the grant application. I can brush this mess.
So good.
Can I just have a second? So, Mr. Collins, are you with us? Looks like he's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Yep. All right. Would you like to give us a brief overview of the grant application?
Sure. Does everybody have a copy of the, of the email that I sent out with the details?
Yeah, I think it's in our package.
Okay, good. It's pretty straightforward. The, the service is to revise the grant application that was submitted in 2022 for federal bipartisan infrastructure funds. The difference between 2022 and 2023, a couple of major differences are that when the 22 application was reviewed at the federal level, you had not received notice of your state grant in hand. And so that was a major factor in the application review was whether the applicant had the grant match in hand. And the timing last year of the multimodal funds and the decisions at the state level, it was pushed back at the state level, and you didn't have the grant in time for the feds to know you, you had it. You had it about a month later, I believe. So now you have that grant in hand, and that's a big box to check if you're going for a 2023 application. The other major difference is that this notice of funding opportunity now in '23 has two different grant opportunities built into one RFP. And so they vary slightly different. They're slightly different. Your project could be eligible for both. And in fact, the application process enables applicants to apply for both. And then DOT looks at them and judges which one it thinks is most appropriate and where certain monies could come from. And then that's, that's all an in-house decision. What remains the same as last year is strong congressional support is important for any application, and Norbert didn't have that last year. We could change that this year. The application remains a very strong application technically, and the, we had a debriefing. And I think Alan attended that. We had a debriefing with the federal review folks. And your project has a great need. What you didn't have last year was they had a very strict criteria for disadvantaged communities. This year, under the new NOFO, that's reduced too. So your chances are higher for qualifying for a grant. So that's the basic difference. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So you talk about that we need political support at the federal level to move this forward?
Any grant needs political support, state, federal level. You had it at the state level. I didn't see any. Maybe somebody else did, but I didn't see any from your congressperson last year.
So you feel that's very important for the success of this grant, so your congressperson?
Everybody else who's going to win a grant is going to have strong support from their congressperson.
Okay. Yeah, we have a question.
When's, you know, the announcement date for the award's granted?
If I heard that right, the question is, what's the announcement date for the grant award of the '23 grants? Is that correct?
Yes.
No, that's not, that is not posted. But if it's like last year, it would probably be late in 2023.
And what is the timeline for spending that funding? Do you know?
I think there's a two- to three-year window. This is a planning grant. It depends on how fast they roll them out and how fast they, that they actually do the contracting with their, with their clients. So the announcement comes, that's a political announcement, and then the administration follows up of contracting, similar to what would happen with a state grant application. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't give you an answer, but I don't think that you're, that you're contracting for a federal grant would happen sooner than probably, I guess, would be February or March 2024.
Just one last question. Were you talking about the transit or demographic diversity? Can you speak a little bit more about that? You said those partnerships might help in grant application.
I apologize. I'm having trouble hearing through.
So in your memo, it says Norbert Gordo should alert small towns to any transit or demographic diversity partnerships that have advanced since 2022.
So any, any partnership that has happened over the past year to engage with populations that, surrounding that are qualified as disadvantaged or transit organizations that, that represent people who travel, and let's say Norbert is a reverse commute for Philadelphia workers, that would be a benefit. And that should be shown. Last year, to prepare for the application, there wasn't much time. And as your representative, we reached out to a transit organization in Philadelphia. They didn't have the bandwidth last year. That might have changed. So that's something that really, as a, as a municipality, whoever's, whoever's representing you as a committee member or, you know, a champion of the project can make, we can give the reference, and you can make that call and see if they want to partner. And then the other, the other idea that came up during the grant application was formalization of your efforts to be an accessible town. So the idea of accessible Norbert, starting right at the train station, with a greater concept of eventually helping all businesses to become accessible. Start at the core station. But the idea of an accessible Norbert would be a, it's, it's a, it's a smart business decision. It's a good human decision. And if you did it right, it would become known to, to those populations. And so that, that's what we offered last year. I'm not sure whether any of those ideas have advanced, but certainly anybody who wants to pick up that idea, we can help them with.
Ken, Alan, do you see any problem kind of reaching out to state representative? Federal representative should not be coming directly to council?
Oh, and so actually, she was here about, what, six weeks ago, Janine?
Yeah.
She came and visited us, so I think we've established an action with her. And she said to let her know if we need assistance with any grants, so should be to work.
Who is this she?
Mary.
Mary. I just wanted to make sure we have a lot of. Yes, yes.
I suspect one of the issues with not getting that is we had a transition between congresspeople last year. They went from Matty Dean to Mary Dees Gannon. So it might have gotten crossed in transition.
Yeah, and I noticed Jim Spear is on the, on the call, and he was very involved in the whole grant process, state and federal. His ideas were central to the application during the station square process. And so, you know, I just think that if you, if you have any questions internally from a local representative, Jim might be able to help.
Do you know how we address the other question? The transit or demographic diversity partnerships? Do we know who we would go to without that? I certainly don't.
I mean, I don't know if the Council of Council counts as a transit.
Right.
Diversity.
That's all I can think of. Yeah. But there's. I don't know what that partnership would look like. I know. Yeah. So this is, this is where, I mean, I, you know.
Maybe you can, maybe you can let us know in an email about some other, you know, some institutions that you would consider useful there. We can see locally, like they don't even have to be in our area just to give us some peer comparisons, so we know what, what you're recommending.
We'll do, we'll do our best, Fred. The, the other thing that we did with Samantha was we, and this was recognized by the federal reviewers, was an innovative partnership that would enable disadvantaged communities to participate online and learn about the process of the project so that, so that the team would be meeting online as the project went through. And through DOT, they would pick partners who wanted to see how a small community brought their project through development. And so there's, there's an outreach component to this whole federal infrastructure bill. And they'd recognize that this was an innovative approach that we don't know of anybody else using. And so what it, what it does is it says, yes, you know, we don't technically meet a disadvantaged community status, but we recognize that we have a capacity to be a partnership, and we're open to that. So I think it's worth, if your, if your congressperson is going to represent you actively, I think it's an idea that's worth taking directly to USDOT and saying, look, this is, this is an asset, and it's a way that we can partner with, with disadvantaged communities directly by technology transfer, by letting them be part of our process and seeing how we do things. Because what's new about this federal bill is that it enables communities to acquire money to do planning and design using federal funds. And there's never been that ability before in the transportation funds. It's always been, the federal funds were dedicated to construction, and the local communities, it was up to them to figure out how to advance the project through planning, engineering, and, and environmental clearances. This changes the game. So I hope that it helps explain it.
Sure. So let me just summarize. This is, the request is for $2,500 to facilitate this grant resubmission. It sounds like we've learned our lessons from, got feedback directly from the federal agencies last year, and got a strategy for updating the grant. And, you know, thinking more than did succeed this year. It's a quite substantial grant, and it would cover a lot of the borough's planning needs for downtown improvement work of various sorts.
I would add, I think, like county boards would be helpful, especially since none of these two there members are certainly on seventh form. So getting some support on the ground.
Correct.
Especially if it's cooperation.
Correct. And I know that Ken and I discussed this, and we felt this was a worthwhile gamble.
Sure. I mean, it's a very modest investment, which would see very large return.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not a very high risk.
All right. Further discussion from council? All right, let's vote on approving the grant resubmission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Pennsylvania, thank you. Mr. Collins, we'll talk more in the next one.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Okay. 10B and 10C, contract bids for various programs. Would you like to make a motion?
Together.
We'll see what's up.
That's what I have. All right. I move that Borough Council award the contract bid for the Heford Avenue sewer replacement project.
Take a second.
A second.
Okay. A quick summary here.
Mr. President, the base bid, the lowest bidder was A. Dargile and Sons Incorporated of Brookhaven, Pennsylvania, with a bid amount of $68,900, which I believe is under our project.
And our program engineer reports that he's worked with this company. With awareness, familiar with this company. They are reputable.
He has a bid tabulation sheet. Carries his seal on it, which means he's done all his due diligence on each of these contractors, checking to ensure they're responsible and an acceptable bidder. So he's done all the check, all the checks.
All right.
Yeah.
Questions from council? And then this is like an emergency sewer replacement. I don't know if this is the blockage that was found, or potential blockage that was found during our scope work?
Right, on Shirley, Shirley River. Yep.
Okay.
What is the estimate timeline for this project to take place? For how long?
Not sure exactly, but I think it probably started, you know, this year.
It should be easily finished, easily, yes.
It's not, not a huge project, so I imagine you can get knocked out this year.
Just so, you know, people know about any.
Yeah, let's, let's get a.
D4s or anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll post it on our website, social media, everything.
Well, if you're going to have it for your, you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a good, good thought. Let's get more information about the timeline. Be ready to announce it once it's, once we have a table. Okay. After the vote, we're going to award the contract bid for the Heford Avenue replacement project. All those in favor? Okay, this is the evidence. 10C.
I move the Borough Council award a contract bid for Woodside Avenue Range and Cooper projects.
A second.
Correct.
Mr. President, the low bidder was Scott Building Park of Norristown, Pennsylvania, with a base bid of $172,519.25. Scott Building Park is deemed a reputable local. Scott Building Park is deemed a reputable local contractor by the Bononi. They recommend award of base bid contract to this firm contingent upon their execution of the contract. It's a wide record, lots of insurance.
And we do have a grant for
$200,000.
Yeah, for the entire project here.
Well, very close, but the unusual part about this project is that it covers the design phase of the grant, or the design phase.
Yeah, it was estimated that the borough would be on the hook for about five grand and we're right in line with about that, maybe a little over that. But that's pretty good for a project of this.
We'll take it, huh?
Yeah.
Well, it also helps
It could work to our Church of Public Works for
Yeah, Jeff actually pursued this grant, he applied for it, and now it's out.
It also helps with stormwater, uh, or those that act.
The BNP's?
No, no.
SPS.
Here's the
Pollution protection form? Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it helps with that.
Some boroughs require it, it's on your state law to reduce stormwater.
And the USP more.
Yeah, all these, all these good things. We're voting to award a contract bid for the Woodside Avenue Range Improvement Project. All those in favor? Give it a chance. All right, 10D. This is so I'm over here, why?
I move to approve resolution 2023-10 for the disposition of certain records.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Summarize. Mr. President, this is records that are recommended for destruction by our contract which have completed the review of those records. It advised what is necessary for retention and the remainder here is ready for destruction. If you have some lessons. Listen.
Yeah, there were immense numbers of old records sitting in one of the offices here in the borough. We are still working through dealing with the government records taking a lot of time. And this is one of the first resolutions to allow these records to be disposed of and make sure they're body by state law.
There's more coming.
Yeah.
We've approved more before this, too, so.
We've approved some, we're approving one. We're voting to dispose of certain records. All those in favor? Those who are listening in favor? We're reading it, and the list of records is in the bag. If anybody is interested in the kinds of things that were hovering around the borough. 10E, dispersion.
I move to advertise the zoning ordinance amendment to provide for dispersion of certain uses in the 5A and 5B utility districts.
Sorry? Okay, that's four.
At the July meeting, council approved this ordinance, which again would make sure that certain uses, more thought as undesirable uses are spread out from one another. The thought was then that would be moving forward. And as it says, zoning change, it would have to go to the planning commissions. We received some informal feedback from the Norbert Planning Commission that it wasn't drafted exactly how they had discussed it, thought it would be. In two regards, and those are two issues that I would recommend based upon their feedback, that the ordinance be amended and resubmitted for formal submission. The two issues of change will, one, the prior ordinance took into consideration neighboring municipalities' uses, i.e. Lower Marion's uses across two Montgomery Avenue, that would separate uses from them as well. However, when the Norbert Planning Commission was doing their evaluation as to whether or not this would result in essentially a de facto ban in that area, they were not considering Lower Marion. And obviously, we want to make sure that we do not result in a de facto ban on these uses. They have to be permitted somewhere. So I recommend that the proposed change says it's only for properties or uses that are in Norbert borough. Of course, Lower Marion can do whatever they want on their side, but this would just apply to us. So it would not have to be 500 feet away from something across the street, just on our side of Montgomery Avenue. That's the first change. The second change, and that is what the Norbert Planning Commission intended it to be. The second change was that the Norbert Planning Commission wanted the dispersion of the certain uses, personal service uses in the 5A to not just be from the new uses that would come up after the ordinance takes effect, but also from the existing uses that are there currently. Which makes sense, it would be hard to enforce otherwise when a use is new or old. So to be clear, this still does not impact the current uses that are there. So they are grandfathered in, they won't have to leave. But if a new use is proposed that's of that same personal service use comes in after this ordinance, if it were to take effect, then it wouldn't just be another new personal care use. It's personal care use, not personal service use, it's personal care use. It would also have to be 500, 400, 350 feet, 350 feet away from an existing personal care or driveway use. So those are the two changes that were recommended by the planning commission. And it was thought, why advertise the money moving ordinance forward when they're just going to say, we don't like it, we want this different? They're having to come back to you. They don't need until September anyways. So the thought was, if the council wanted to amend it for those two ways, do so, and then therefore we have a better ordinance going to the planning commission to have a better, look for a better review by them. And we're still on par, timing wise, we're still on par for the September meeting.
I know Councilor Riggers has seen these, she's the person forced behind us.
Yeah, I didn't receive any feedback, but she was involved in the prior email.
Right. Questions from council?
It makes sense.
Yeah, so we haven't actually advertised it yet, because it will still be advertised at a time point, so we'll to pass it there. Okay. Let's vote on zoning ordinance limits for dispersion of 5A and 5B districts. All those in favor? Or in the advertise?
Aye.
They oppose? All right. Yes.
I would have one, but I don't know.
Oh, good. Okay, sorry, if you have more to say. I wouldn't pass it.
That's all, Chris.
All right. 10F, I will entertain a motion to table these solid waste ordinance.
I move that we table the solid waste ordinance then, the advertisement of solid waste ordinance then.
Second.
Okay. So briefly, there have been some banners brought up and on the ordinance that we're still working on, trying to solidify.
Yes, President Bush, some of the things that we wish to do a little bit deeper evaluation of is in terms of how we would of the rate set would affect some revenue and how we're going to adjust those items. I think there was also some possible language clarification that we feel is necessary in order to eliminate some confusing new word sections on the ordinance. So I think there's just a little bit of rework that needs to be done. With the committee, you can bring this back, play with it a little more.
Okay, we're still trying to determine how to deal with businesses.
Yes.
So the timeline here is that we need to have this done before we put out our trash contract, our RFP for a trash hauler, which should be done. We need to have a new trash contract ready every year.
Yes. And we should still be able to initiate that process as this process continues to move forward, especially when we know and have a clear language where we know what's going to be, we're just operating from that ordinance will be, what will be in effect when we finally ready.
So we really need to pass this, huh?
We do, yes.
I just want to clarify, I think the main discrepancy is that we do want to provide for the personal establishments that we're trying to um, and organize and trap to, doesn't seem to accept that, or it's not clear that it is. Um, or
It can be blurred, yeah.
Yeah, I think council's impression is that the downtown dumpsters that are used by our business community are useful. They keep trash off the streets, trash cans off the streets, recycling off the streets, downtown area. So we're hopeful that can continue.
Just
All right.
Well, our first So, I mean, there was a lot of debate during the last budget season about how the costs were allocated for these commercial dumpsters. And that plan was made that with the new contract, we could prove that make it more equitable or at least have a better measurement. Is that going to be the case?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to pass through whatever costs we get from the trash hauler to president.
Actually, one of the things I wanted to look at was a little bit more clear what that question was and whether or not we were already addressing it or we still need to address it.
I look like the question was pretty simple. Our contract with the current provider didn't break out to pricing enough. So we didn't have a divide, we didn't have a mechanism for dividing the cost. So we used like an approximation, you know, based on
That's correct.
As we could, and now maybe we have that option.
Yeah, based on our community conversation, we wanted to make sure that the record keeping was part of the contract, but it doesn't need to be part of the ordinance. Can you stand that?
No, we, yeah, that is correct. We want to have data reports provided to us. And we've had that as an element of previous contracts. So that's like what we want to have in there. And there's certainly cost breakdowns that we can clarify better in the ordinance, which will kind of leave our hauler with the requirement of having to provide us with that information. So those are some of the other elements that we want to make sure get in this code.
May I have a question?
Would that?
Well, I have a little question.
Okay, thank you.
So who is preparing the RFP? Do we have a consultant, or not, or are we doing it?
We have a previous RFP and Samantha started already making edits to it. So we're just
Yeah, we'll be bringing a good version of that forward.
Right, because obviously we want to like not wait till the ordinance is
No, yeah, we want to do it Correct, we want to do that process concurrently with the draft ordinance.
Okay, good.
So next month we might have both, RFP ordinance and the RFP.
So I was thinking we do the advertisement in September and then in October, the business meeting, you approve the solid waste ordinance revision first and then right immediately thereafter, approve issuing the RFP.
Right, that's right.
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to, if we are going to make some changes in that commercial property owners are going to have to start paying for their own pickup, or changes like that, we'll want to give them the notice so that they're not caught suddenly at the beginning of the year without trash pickup. So we'll want to let them know ahead of time so they can make arrangements to do what they need to do to take care of things on their
There currently are commercial charges that what those changes will be, yeah, we want to get that, it'll be a lot clearer picture.
So it wants to be just crystal clear to the commercial, ahead of schedule so that come the first of the year, there won't be an issue with their trash, you know, their trash.
And also apply to apartment buildings or town.
Many, any major changes people should be made with enough time so they can make arrangements to do what they need to do to take care of their luggage. So not three weeks into January with files of general.
One of the elements, though, we won't know is exactly what the rate will finally look like since we have not yet approved the contract. As soon as we do, obviously that is information we want to get out.
While we disseminate, yeah, make sure we get it to the right parties.
I think as soon as we, as soon as we advertise, we can let some of the business know that things are going to change. And let some of the departmental wait to pass it.
Yeah, and one of the things is right now, it's pretty clear that the charges that we've had have been covering our costs.
Have not?
No, I have.
Yes.
The fund actually last year only went down by about $9,000 and that was not
Well, it's pretty difficult, we're trying to
Right, perfect world, right. So the spending matched the revenues that were coming in, so we weren't that far.
But again, the issue will be is if you, that is based upon spreading those costs to apartment buildings and commercial buildings. I think council should determine if those costs aren't spread, the impact of that on your single residential unit that will be paying trash, the trash bids have increased 68% in some neighborhoods from prior years just through the cost increases.
Well, I mean, we're also going to get less service, right? So hopefully non-serving apartment buildings will reduce.
But they charge, they'll charge more per pickup for less. That's how they base their bids, so the more people go picking up, the less it, you know, it would ultimately be less of a price per absence.
Are we excluding apartment buildings from our program or are we just giving them a higher, a different tiered rate? This is what was confusing me in discussions because we have residential, we have a moderately small multifamily, and then we have the commercial ones.
You talking about this here, like what we have currently?
No, what is in this draft ordinance? And this is what was confusing me is, are we saying that these apartment buildings are not going to fit within if it's a category, if it's 10 or more?
Then yes, they are not going to receive, if it's between 5 and 10, the borough has the option of including them. If they want it in the borough, it wants it. If it's less, then
Between 6 and 10.
So between 6 and 10, it would be the option.
If it's 10 or more, they have to raise their own trash. Here, we're not going to charge them a fee.
And then here, we'll need, and eventually we'll need some clarification in terms of how we want to lay, do we want to lay any ground rules for that process of independently contract? Do we want to set certain times, days for that haul? These are questions that aren't really answered.
It's in the ordinance that they would let the authority down with the pickup schedule.
But the issue last time wasn't so much about excluding the apartment buildings. It was that the method for charging the apartment buildings.
So we're going to start out with the charging.
Which was confusing.
We will have a direct
They were sort of like dividing it by the number of apartments. Those are that was the issue, it wasn't that we wanted to exclude them.
So we'll continue to discuss this behind this. Okay. We're going to hash all this out, so I expect by next month, we will have something ready to pass to enable us to get this contract off everybody.
Could I, could I just make a request when it does come to us again, that we know who, if this is the case, who we're currently picking up trash for, that we're saying we're no longer going to pick up trash for? I would like to know that very clearly.
Right, yeah.
No, 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 when we
Yes, who currently has service that will not have service under this?
I'd like to know that once all of these details have been ironed out and this when it comes to us again, that would really help me to understand. Oh, these are the people that need notice right away because they are going to have to get a new hauler January 1st. Or there isn't anybody that that's happening to, because I don't know what our core rules are, you know, I don't have that in my head of who we pick up for. I didn't know there are large apartment buildings that we don't pick up, I just know that because I see a totally different hauler on different days, you know. But I don't know if that's everybody or not. So anyway, I just would, that would really help me when it comes time to consider new ordinance.
All right, so the motion on table is to table this adversely. We are voting to table this and take it back up again for next meeting. All those in favor? Okay, motion's tabled. And let's move on to 10G, single use classes.
I'd have to advertise, single use plastics, the ordinance.
Okay, you want to, some are ready or some are, who wants to take this one?
I have to. Correct. So as, uh, Marburg should be aware, Marburg is the, or was the very first municipality in the state that has been to enact any sort of regulations banning, uh, single use plastic, plastics within their municipal limits.
Plastic bags.
Plastic bags, straws.
Straws.
Origins. And it wasn't actually a ban on that, it was just a fee on plastic bags. Since that time, and since Marburg was able to sort of lead the way, like the charge on municipalities, that comfortable moving forward, uh, and more aggressive. Uh, and with, with some direction in the systems that are dependent on it, uh, a lot of municipalities are now expanding, uh, the single use items that they are looking forward with, banning to include not just bags and straws, but also poly styrene containers, essentially styrofoam containers, not plastic containers, styrofoam containers. And some are proceeding to ban plastic utensils as well. Uh, most notably, I think, last month, Marion Township, who has both the King of Fresh Mall improvement, was there, voted to, uh, before their ordinance, that would ban plastic, so, uh, plastic utensils. Um, so Marburg currently does have an ordinance. Uh, so this ordinance would bring up the speed of what other municipalities are doing to, to resolve in a complete like ban on single use plastic bags, same exceptions that have been in place, um, maybe a little more. Uh, but, and then also provide a ten cent fee on paper bags. So paper bags, instead of provided, it would be a mandatory ten cent fee. Uh, just that now it's a ten cent fee for plastic bags. For new plastic, half, do paper, do papers, ten cent. Always bring your own, uh, which is what that fee is set up sort of courage. Studies have shown that that is the best way to, to get people to switch to bringing their own reusable bags by saying a small fee in paper bags. Um, the straw regulations will remain the same. Uh, and again, so really it says that if you need a straw, uh, a plastic straw, and you ask for one, it's to be provided, uh, no questions asked. And that was a concern early on with the ADA community. So that was addressed, that remains unchanged. Uh, the addition to the poly styrofoam, poly styrofoam, styrofoam containers, you know, it's a ban on those containers. Uh, for single use plastic utensils is a ban on those. However, commercial establishments may provide those for a charge of less than ten cents, uh, which would also be kept, just like a big bag by the business it would, it's not paid over the borough. Uh, it's kept by the business. And again, that, that is there in case people do want the plastic, uh, somewhere, they can, or the utensils, they can pay for it and it's provided.
Does that need to be at the request of the customer? And they just say, okay, here's your plastic thing, right?
It's, it's at the request.
Request.
It's upon the request.
Okay.
Um, the ordinance would be set to take effect September third, two thousand twenty-four, which is the day after Labor Day of next year. Uh, there is language in here to indicate that, uh, during that time, the current ordinance still stays in effect, so we're not repealing it if, if you were to pass this next month. Uh, so if it wasn't passed next month, it wouldn't be effective until September of next year. Uh, and in that time, temporary signs requirements for signs that would be provided by the borough would need to be put in by the businesses sixty days after the enactment of the ordinance, and it must remain for six months after to inform, uh, the customers of, of these regulations, which other municipalities, businesses appreciate it because they know that's not, public, it's not down, that's doing, that's the business, sorry, that the borough is doing. And to provide information about what needs to be done, um, to why. So, again, the, the fines, enforcement remain the same as currently in the code, it's just expanding the products. And again, enforcement wouldn't improve until after September. Uh, so again, this, this is an ordinance that, uh, a lot of municipalities are suing in different degrees. And it really brings Marburg back again to being a leader, uh, in, in trying to encourage reusable products, uh, and not single use plastics. Oh, and because of that, I think it remains a chapter. It's not just plastic anymore, uh, single use plastics regulations.
And just to clarify, it's my understanding that, uh, business does not have to charge for a paper bag if it's already a reusable bag. If, if, say, if I, if I'm collecting, uh, uh, shopping bags that came from Whole Foods and I'm, and are reusing them and handing them out, it's my, uh, it's my understanding that a reuse of a, of, it does not require a charge. That, that was what I was.
I, I'm not sure I agree with that.
That was what I was represented from.
Well, I mean, are you, you as a business owner or?
As a business owner, it's, so if I collect, uh, pre-used, uh, paper bags and then reusing pa, paper bags, they're not single use of them.
That's what American Family Market.
Yeah, that's what they've done. And that is what Rob had represented, there would be no charge.
It says that you can provide reusable bags for ten cent fee.
I, I do agree with you. I don't think there should be, for, because that's basically taking what's already out there. It's not, it's not taking a new bag, because against the whole.
Right. And that was what was represented by, by Rob.
If that is what council would like to do, this can be amended today to, to include that. Uh, I could certainly provide that as an exception, uh, but by the definition of what a recycled paper bag is and what a reusable bag is, a reusable bag is a machine wash or made from material that can easily clean and disinfect.
Right. But I think that.
What if you thought like a reusable or reused bag or something like that?
Yeah, I, I think the easiest way would be to just create a bad exception, to say that if there is a recycled paper bag, uh, that is.
Exactly.
That, that's handed, I mean, I, it's, it's hard to enforce, but again, I don't think enforcement would put an issue in Marburg anyway, so I don't want to create issues that aren't out there. But you said.
Chief, the chief of shirts, paper bag. Chief of shirts, maybe the.
Well, and, and it's in the spirit of the, it's in the spirit of what we're trying to do.
So if there was a, the desire to make an amendment to permit recycled paper bags to be provided at no fee, if it's not the first time.
Right.
That is abused.
Yes.
That can be done. Uh, but it would need.
And also what I'd like to do with that in there, I would like the, as mayor, start a campaign to have people recycle and just, you know, reuse the paper bags, uh, that are reusable. I think it's good for the earth, not to create new trash and new waste.
Well, and the, the businesses have, a lot of the businesses in town have done that on their own.
Right.
They have, they have a collection of bags that if you need one, you can pick one.
Right.
And, and, you know, I have certainly dropped off, like, at their points in town, so I, I don't think that's gonna be hard to get that.
Right.
It's just gonna keep it going.
But I, I just wanna make it official so that there's no to do.
Would someone like to move to amend this to the, so maybe, uh, ordinance, okay? Uh, do you guys see what we're admitting to here?
To allow, uh, you know, the business owners to use, um, reused bags.
I have no fee.
Reused, recycled paper bags.
Reused, many, not, reused paper bags, I mean, they don't have to be original.
Well, that's true. They don't have to be originally one hundred percent.
Right, long as they're reused. That is a recycling.
Reuse a paper bag, whatever, you know.
Well, the, the term recycled paper bag is the fine term.
I know. So that's why I say, can we just say, you know, reused paper bag?
I mean, who knows if Whole Foods bags are minimum forty percent?
I, I have no idea because, yes, but if somebody's buying paper bags brand new, I'd want them to follow.
Right. So keep, keep recycled paper bags the same.
Yeah.
And just introduce reused bags.
Uh, I'll, I'll make sure it works, but the way we do it is either make a special exception for recycled bags, or we'll change the definition of reusable bag to include a reused recycled paper bag. I want to make sure it doesn't have any.
Repro措ions.
Repro措ions that aren't consistent.
Alright, so we have, we have an amendment, or a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion of this amendment? It's clear. John, what can you do here? Okay, for, okay, they're voting to amend to allow reused bags to be.
Used paper bags.
Used paper bags, reused left. All those in favor? Okay. Amendment passes. Back to the ordinance itself. Any more, uh, discussion of the ordinance? Okay, we're gonna vote to advertise these single use plastics ordinance amendments. All the, it says amended. Uh, as amended, all those in favor? Okay, classes.
Amendment as amended.
Amendment as amended. I'm pretty sure that's how I should refer to this.
There's no desire to frequency use plastic straws.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
No, right.
It's getting late. Uh, administrative staff position changes. Would you like to move to discuss the administrative staff position changes?
Um, I move that we're, council, discuss the approval of administrative staff position changes.
Uh, Mr. Countler?
President, uh, before the council this evening, is a proposal to, uh, change the staffing arrangement, uh, in the borough administration office. Uh, currently, our office manager has announced that she will be leaving, uh, the end of next week, uh, which does present some opportunity to evaluate, uh, where the staffing level is and where we prefer it to be at least, uh, and, and see where that would be. Uh, my proposal this evening, uh, which shifts currently where we're at is about a three and a half, the full-time equivalent, uh, was, would bring us to four full times in the office. I would include Alan and myself in that, that figure. Uh, my budget estimates, uh, for this year anticipate that our, our salary budget would be about seventy-five thousand higher than it will end based on our current staffing.
We're coming in on your budget.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, that's what my projections, uh, indicates. Um, the two positions in question, um, focus on the two primary areas of, uh, the administration office. On the financial side, we would be creating a position of bookkeeper administrative assistant. That position would be focused on, obviously, helping with the financial activities of the borough, um, also, uh, serving as administrative support, myself and Alan, and also, uh, to the, the borough council in the form of potentially preparing minutes and assisting with packaging and some other programs. Um, the other position, uh, would be for records clerk, uh, office assistant. That position would be focused on the very large task of getting our records, uh, with the borough in better order. Uh, we have managed to digitize a great deal of materials, but what we do have is not very well indexed or easily searchable. Um, and there is quite a deal more that needs to be done in order to make those records, uh, more functional for our use, uh, and conducting the business. Another element of what we'd be looking at these positions, initially, my proposal was that one of these positions would assist the borough police department, uh, both with walk-ins and, and phone calls to directing out to officers who are out in the field. And I know the chief could probably speak to this, but we do frequently get calls and walk-ins of individuals who want to speak to somebody right away and find themselves frustrated when there's not somebody immediately there to help make that connection, uh, with an officer. And so one of the ideas here is that these positions would also, um, include that responsibility of helping with that, that element of customer service that that could, uh, to this point underserved. This year, we, we do not have, um, in the police department budget, uh, a position for office assistant. I know it was discussed, but it, it did not make its way into the final budget. Um, are there any questions about the positions themselves?
Well, he just asked, he had two strings, he has, he must say, I love the police, that's good.
No, I think it would be a benefit, as Ken said, um, a lot of times when people call in right now, they get to the dial down, voicemail, and they're just hitting one or two randomly, hitting somebody, and then there's some frustration there. They don't know who's working. So if they're looking for an officer and they get a list of people, it doesn't provide them with contact free because they're the one working today. Having somebody there and answer the phone and direct the call because they don't have a schedule and know who's in that, that would be a great beneficial.
Yeah, I guess I just, I don't see a, a direct connection between the tasks, you know, of assisting the police department and doing the records. I guess it's just.
Well, no, I'm, I'm gonna say that I think it should be for both positions. I, I initially thought just one, but I don't understand why we wouldn't just drive both positions so that, you know, if one of them is gone, we're still providing that. Uh, the administration office provides administrative support to, uh, basically all of our functions, all of our departments. So it doesn't seem out of character for us to provide this element of administrative support for the police department.
Both, both positions are providing some customer service, I mean, that, in both of them, they have that responsibility. So, um, to have some of that customer service be, be related to helping people connect with the police, doesn't seem to be.
The volume isn't like incredibly heavy that it would somehow impact their ability to be functional. It would just kind of add to our daily call volume. And, and I don't, I don't think the call numbers are gonna substantially affect our ability to productive. I think in reality, at serving these phone calls, it's gonna bring better, um, customer satisfaction, really.
If I may, currently, if a resident in the borough needs an officer, um, and the officer's out in patrol, the only way really is to call nine one one. And they've been repeatedly told to call nine one for emergencies, non-emergencies, uh, for whenever you need an officer. Despite being assured that it's okay to call nine one one, there's a, there's still a, an inert sense of resistance. There's a, a feeling that they don't wanna do that because it, it makes them uncomfortable, um, to have to call nine one, even though they've been assured that it's right then to do. So instead, they just get frustrated because they can't get an officer. This provides, uh, essentially a non-emergency number, uh, so they can get in touch with the department.
Does this, I hadn't thought of this before, does this impact our police labor contract at all? Do we have somebody who's not on their contract doing police?
They're not really doing police.
No, let's see, what they're doing is they're, they're going to connect that individual directly with an officer. And if not, give them a message to that officer on duty to get back to them. They're not going to be providing service directly to anyone. They're just a connector, if you will, an operator connecting them to the destination. But it, it is, it is a worthy question to ask.
John, do you, do you think that should go to the police labor? Is, is that clear cut? I mean, is, are you com, would you be comfortable with this?
Yeah, I'd put it for that.
What's that?
Yeah.
Not gonna. Yeah, I guess the question is, if you, if you think it's really clear cut that we don't need to bother, you know, clearing sort of our labor, our labor council?
There's never any harm in verifying that it is not an issue of employee shop boundaries. And certainly, we don't want a situation like that. And, uh, you know, I, I think if the council chooses to proceed with that caution, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. We can verify and check what you mean as well, see what their position is on the issue. Right now, we, you know, the, whether or not the office assistant was going to be actually in the unit, I, I don't think that was going to be the case. Uh, I I don't know if either mayor or chief know anything about that discussion.
For them to be seated in the police department?
Yeah.
I think they would get, they would have to need certain clearances.
No, no, I meant into the labor unit.
Oh.
Right. So, I mean, they wouldn't automatically have been fallen to the unit, so they would have been unsworn, so they would likely have not been in the union shop to begin with.
Right.
So, I mean, my initial suspicion under that premise was that it wasn't going to have issue with the union, but there's certainly never any harm in making sure we don't have a touching time.
Okay. I guess my other concerns is that the office assistant position does not mention anything right now as related to these police...
Yeah. What we would do is copy exactly what we have in the other position on that topic into the other.
Okay. So, you had other to be on the office assistant?
Actually, there's an August sixteenth, are you talking about the record reports office assistant one? There's an August sixteenth one that does have that in the draft that has that.
Yeah, so...
I'm looking at the August tenth. I'm looking at the one in the back.
Yeah, that would be the old version of that. I'm sorry, there was...
That's okay.
I hadn't had the opportunity in that version to have the chief's comments included. So, it's the more recent one with the highlight that is the more accurate version.
And the bookkeeper administrative assistant one that doesn't mention that right now, but we're recommending that it do mention that.
Yeah, I think there's no harm in having both positions assisting that function.
You know, they both are doing some, you know, basic responding to people coming in and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, like updates in the...
This one isn't any newer. That one is.
Oh, yeah, it was the same.
This one's the same.
So, does that position have any part to do or to...
In terms of the call taking related to the police department, that would be under the authority of the chief, but the rest would report to me, yes. But the chief and I don't think there's any issue with that in coordinating.
I'll just note for the record that in the past, we had included an office assistant for the police department in earlier in the budget, two years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, but it went unfilled. So, there's been a need to be recognized before.
This is kind of a part of a way for us all to get around the space challenges on the police department side since they really don't have enough space in there for any more desks.
Okay.
Just a quick briefing then on some of the...
So, there's a walk-in and they would be directly, they would come in, there'd be nobody at the police station, and the signs is for the borough office?
There could be somebody at the station, but they can come right into the office and then we would get them connected with whoever's in the station.
All right. Your comment. Your cost.
So, in terms of this year's budgets, estimates based on the salary ranges, which I was, those ranges were developed based on a salary survey that the borough has participated in here in the Delaware Valley area, and using those wage ranges, there's several that I believe to be a reasonable compensation range for both of these positions. Based on, in the table, in your memo, page one, shows a summary of what those wages are, both what our costs are estimated to be for year-end and, you know, what that salary would have looked like if it was a full year's worth of work. It's anticipated right now that if both of these positions were filled, we would likely be able to fit that within the current budget capacity for the administration department. Should know that none of this is, none of these costs right now are being attributed to the police department, and I think we would have to have a better grasp of what kind of time demands it was if we were to distribute that cost. And right now, I think it's probably worthy that we just kind of see what that volume is. If it remains negligible, I'm not sure I would think it's necessary to divide it out, simply because it's still out of the general fund. Both departments operate in the general fund, so we'll see how that goes, and I'll work with the chief closely and decide, you know, what we think. We'll come up with a recommendation together and what we think is appropriate for that. But in the meantime, I think it should be fine just incorporating within the department's budget. The real more significant implication would be is how we would look at it, hitting the 2024 budget. Really, with this second position, we're looking at somewhere around an additional fifty thousand in, fifty to, at the higher range, potentially seventy thousand in expense for this, for the administration department, depending upon where these wages end up being and the insurance needs of the employee, whether they're a single-family status, you know, number of dependents. Those elements won't be easily predicted. But I wanted to make sure I gave you something of worst-case scenario picture in terms of what that might look like. Those figures to me look like they are something that we can work in the budget. So, I'm not totally concerned about it, but I did want to make sure you were aware of those budget implications. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always been council's intention to support, you know, the office and to help the door manager find the office staff who feels appropriate and needed for the functioning of the office. So, these are, I mean, we've talked about part-time bookkeeper assistants, we've talked about police assistant assistants, and these are, you know, we need an office manager to replace the position of the office manager. So...
I shouldn't point out that this recommendation does include eliminating the position of office manager as a division next month.
Correct. But the role is going to be very similar.
Yeah, I think that the problem is that we have now three levels of manager in the same office, and it is...
We need somebody filling that role.
Yes. The function will be filled.
Just somebody will pick up the messy job with the newspaper, the weekly email?
I'm doing it.
Oh, you're doing it, okay. Will the new person pick that up?
There will be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a good information source, good source of communication.
Right.
Yeah.
I want to be a little bit more involved with it in general, so...
Okay.
All right.
So, not that it's directly related functionally, but it is a budget issue because the part-time parking officer is an expense that I guess, is that approved this year or...
My understanding was approved for this year's budget. The one thing that I don't know is how many hours were allocated. Trying to do the math to figure out how much that is. When I have that figure, though, is to come back to the finance administration committee to get all the positions forward back.
I mean, the reason why I bring it up is because if we approve this plan today, we're making a budget commitment for next year. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're going to keep this first off for a few months.
Right, so...
The second person, really, we're, one of these is, yeah, so we're adding one more person for next year.
So, the question is, would we then delay the hiring of the part-time parking officer until budget time? Because we don't have a commitment.
I would say they serve, I mean, a part-time officer, a part-time officer serves a different function, obviously.
It's about money. My question's about money.
Right, I get it, but you're filling this role, but then you're not...
What I'm saying is that we have to, we want to make this decision today so they can hire them.
And so, it's in the budget so that we could discuss it for this year to hire. It's something recently has been...
Right now, we're making a commitment into next year. I guess if we hired a part-time parking officer, we wouldn't necessarily have to extend it to the next year. It would be a short-term appointment?
That's kind of...
Because it's part-time.
I don't know that there's any point.
I would expect any, anything like that to continue on here next year. I think we're going to hire some people for this.
Okay, so, the point I'm trying to get at is that, that, like, we have to decide which commitments for next year we want to make now before budget season.
This is what I can't see. The council will be back into the question of this hiring. One of the challenges, though, is the trainings and screenings that need to be done in order to select whoever fills this position. We're probably not going to want it to be something that's short-term. We're going to want somebody who will hold on to the position, given it's a part-time structure. See if we can find somebody we can hold on to, but, I mean, I think the challenge would be, I don't know, Chief, you can speak more to this, but, you know, it's really that we have to go through that training process and those procedures. So, there is a lot of background.
But I'm just getting at that, like, if we can defer a decision about spending that money until budget time, then we can make a...
Right now, it is deferred. We're not asking...
So, we're not doing that now?
We're not asking you as part of this request right now to make any changes to anything in the police department. This is just for these two positions.
But you're not going to go ahead and hire, like, a part-time parking officer?
I would never make any hiring decision without the council's...
But it's approved in the budget, that's what I have.
Yes, but the, when we are ready to proceed with seeking that position to be filled, we will come forward with that.
You mean, just defer the hiring of the part-time until next year, what do we can discuss again next?
In the context of the budget.
I got you.
Because they're taking that money, that money.
Right, I mean, I think...
The common thread is the staffing.
Right, right. I get it. I think we've saved money by some absences this year.
No, no, but this isn't about, this is about making an ongoing commitment.
Right, I get it, I get it.
You see, you don't want to just let the person go.
And there's more research needed for us to understand what that looks like, so I don't think there'll be any issue with that, and we'll move forward when the council's comfortable and ready to do so.
Okay.
I would just point out something that we said at the finance administration committee, but the reason to have these two positions is that that allows Ken and Allen to work on the things that we hired them to work on and to take the tasks that don't have to be done by someone with their skills and give them to someone else. And we are probably going to come to that same conclusion for a part-time parking controller as well down the road. So, but, you know, your point is well taken, Ira, but I don't, I don't think we should be looking at this as an either-or. We, you know...
No, but it's a timing. For me, it was a timing thing.
Okay, but I guess I don't see it as that, but I'm just really appreciative of Ken and Allen for bringing this plan forward, weakness. I think this is really important to give them the tool they need to put in place a lot of the things that this council keeps saying they want, so we're, we ask for a lot, and we need to support.
We've implemented a lot of...
Yes.
Significant projects that put a regulatory burden on the office, and we're going to be doing more when parking goes through. Rental inspections go...
Rental inspection program?
Yeah, rental inspections and parking are both going to be big.
The curb-on-sidewalk inspection program?
Sidewalk inspections are going to be happening, so we're putting a big burden on the office.
There's a lot of big projects on the pipeline, but...
Yeah.
All right, so let's break it down. Does anybody have concerns about the, what is the current title, what's the new title of the office forum? The board forum in Oxen?
There's two new roles, and I don't know that I, I don't know if it's right.
Okay. Bookkeeper administrative assistant, and the other one is records clerk, office assistant.
So, erase those two positions and eliminate the position of...
Right, so are there, do they have any concerns about the position of the bookkeeper office assistant?
The bookkeeper administrative assistant.
Sorry, you want to read the second one?
Okay, so there, there are the... Do you want me to say what the proposal is?
Just read the second one and see if anybody has...
The second one is records clerk slash office assistant.
Okay, does anybody have any concerns about advertising either of those positions? Here's that.
Do you have any concerns about getting rid of the office manager?
Office manager position? I mean, if you could come up with like a name...
No, no, I was going to say, you didn't ask that.
I mean, the name, if you could come up with a name for the position that doesn't involve a hyphen or a slash, that would be useful.
Yeah, that's weird, right?
The names, those things don't roll off the top. Yes, I'm armed or whatever. We need shorter, we need shorter titles.
What would they want on their business card?
Yeah, we can't, can't call somebody these positions.
Concierge.
If you'd like, we can talk to them when they get hired as to which titles, as a reference. We can fiddle with the name. The position itself...
I think, I think the position would be more comfortable with, but obviously, I'm having trouble with the name, so let's try to make it something like the setting.
If anyone has better ideas, because we do have to market the position, so...
Okay, so...
All ears.
Let's vote to approve these administrative staff position changes. All those in favor of these new changes? Okay. So, you are authorized to go ahead with this.
That is a relief.
Get somebody in the office. So, the monthly reports, I note that we do not have a report from the fire chief. At least the ambulance report, hard in this packet. Let's get those next month. The other reports are filed in the packet. New business, old business.
Old business, earlier this night led to this reusable for second use paper bag. The intent is that there would not be a charge for that.
Correct. And if anyone, they can be provided without charge or without request.
So, we'll have to be specifically exempted as recycled paper bag, because reusable bag, you have to charge, that's not a reusable. So, we'll make an exception to have that supplied new recycled paper bags.
Well, I mean, you're saying recycled, it's probably reused.
But you're reusing a recycled paper bag.
You're reusing any paper bag. Paper might be gone from somebody else.
Yeah, even if it's, even if it's not stamped forty percent super pride.
A reused, a reused bag from another place is...
So, can you reuse that?
And a reused, reused paper bag. Reused paper bag.
And, yeah, because we don't, at that point, it's already been produced, we don't care that it's virgin.
More efficient than recycling.
Yes, saving it from a landfill.
Right.
Or recycling, which takes energy. We want to reuse them.
All right, I got it. Just reuse bags. Paper, not super used.
Reused, recycled, you know. Committee reports. Parking, I assume, or...
I can do finance administration really quickly because we talked about the new staff position, so that was a part of our meeting. And we also heard a presentation from Adam Stewart. She's making a proposal for us to consider a part-time position that will be for a person to promote permanent temporary art installations in the borough for the purposes of engagement, bringing people into the borough, supporting the downtown businesses. It's very interesting, and I, we had a couple suggestions for her. She's going to consider those, and I think we'll probably want to come back and make a presentation for the council at some point. You know, it's a good time for us to hear about it as we start budget discussions for twenty-four, and decide what, if any, I just want to get to something like that.
Yeah, I was very impressed with the NARBAR, which Stewart, I think, orchestrated.
Well, Beth Warren started it, and then she took over when Beth, when Beth decided to step away from that and her doing it, so...
This year's, this year's NARBAR, that's fantastic. I think we're concerned about the downtown. We get to encourage activities that'll bring people down there and look at...
Right. So, she has some interesting thoughts on that, so I'm sure we'll, more to come on NARBAR.
All right.
And we're starting next week.
Okay.
We didn't meet last week.
Okay. Public health and safety?
I can write and update. We talked about traffic concerns on Winter.
Yeah.
The traffic engineer reported that it's always on side at the intersection of the street that we, that Winter and Green are in. So, the recommendation is to take a roll at Winter Avenue, so we'll get a holistic reading and we're going to store water pumps, and see if there's a traffic problem. and with regard to stormwater problems, to see if there's a traffic problem, and to address some sort of flooding and then traffic concern there. We got some discussion about the Iona, Iona, and the traffic calling fact. It's scheduled for September 8th or 12th, I think. They're going to move their traffic calling policy to manage those concerns and we went to look at lands that were in danger of the trucks and we also talked about cell based research.
Didn't we do a traffic study?
Yeah, maybe, no, not the traffics.
What, we didn't, so the engineers, this is beyond the traffic engineer's report? They want to do a traffic study for now?
We did a warrant study, determined, whatever the request, controls were warranted.
So we need to do a traffic study before implementing any of these changes or what's the.
What we're looking at is possibly adopting a more higher threshold policy for us to initiate these studies. Part of that, it's quite a high volume of them and we want to make sure that when they do come forward, they really are truly inherited. So we'll be looking at some templates at the upcoming meeting. The other idea was also for us to see what type of grant opportunity are out there for us to do a more comprehensive, you know, traffic study for the borough, especially as we advance to the potential reopening in our Red Avenue. You know, the timing would be really good to implement something that would allow us to address traffic control, even vehicle orientation. You know, we have a lot of one-way streets and it gets confusing to get downtown a little bit. And so these are all elements that we could potentially address for a much more comprehensive study and thus also at the same time, make more utilization of the collector designated roads and deter less traffic in neighborhoods. So those are the type of things that we can look at with a more comprehensive study. A little more expensive, so we need to be looking at options for a study and, you know, now might be a really good time to get like PENDAX attention for funding for such a study just because of the bridge project and our progress with that, so.
This is beyond what's going up to the active transportation study?
Yeah, this is a little beyond that, but, you know, it's still complimentary.
All right. I think Ken has a, we have an update on the left turn sign.
The left turn sign issue just needs us to begin the process of updating the ordinance. The left turn sign came down on Windsor because it hadn't an ordinance to enforce it. It was put up without going through the appropriate process. We have the study now to support its placement. We just need the ordinance and right now, we're doing the cleanup ordinance on missing stop signs and that will be included in that.
So the left turn sign, like after this is all done, is going back up?
It will be included in your draft ordinance to fix any of the discrepancies between signage and what needs to be included.
That was the recommendation of the traffic engineer, among the recommendations of the traffic engineer.
Right, I know the public works department have been working with the police department to make sure we had all that codified so we can actually site people.
He's been emailed, he knows.
With our new process too, we won't skip the step of getting the ordinance in place. So we'll never have that issue again because we'll have the procedure to make sure.
All right, thank you. Any comments for the good council? All right, we will have an executive session after this to discuss legal matter regarding the 201 state line RFP, a legal matter regarding the chargers, and a discussion of contract negotiations. We will not return, is there anything else that's come up that we can discuss?
The two ongoing litigation matters.
Okay, two ongoing litigation matters. We will not return after the executive session. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second discussion, all with a favor of adjuring. Okay, the meeting is adjourned, is that what you mean? All right, we will return.